Thank you everybody for coming to the work session of CDS. CDS South Fulton. Man, I'm very pleased with you.
We'll call for two seat number twelve. Councilmember Ralph.
Present.
Councilmember Dunn.
Present.
Councilmember Lewis.
Present.
Councilmember Gillyard. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Baker. Also present is Mr. Donald, City Manager, City Attorney, Julian Walker. Mayor Bill Edwards, you have a forum.
Okay, since we have no presentations, the bound stands will manage, we're going to the agenda items.
You have two work sessions and agenda items, mayors?
It's their presentations, I know they don't. They don't do the agenda.
There are no presentations for the work session, but there are agenda items.
Oh, I apologize. Yes, sir. For a call, our person, this.
The first item is council discussion on the I-285, I-20 West interchange. Stockholder outreach presentation by Georgia DOT.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Matthew Fowler with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Lower, okay. Makes sense. I'm Matthew Fowler with the Georgia Department of Transportation. Just wanted to provide y'all a update tonight on the I-20, 285 interchange reconstruction that we're looking at. It is just getting underway with the actual preliminary work. So, we're pretty early on, construction's a few years off, but we're doing project development now. And the project is technically within the city of Atlanta. However, it's, you know, lots of South Fulton residents along with others in the region definitely use it on a daily basis. So, I will give a quick update on some of the background. And then I'm gonna bring up my coworker, Marla, who's actually a resident here in South Fulton. And she'll provide some details on the second half of the presentation. So, this project is part of the Major Mobility Investment Program. This is a statewide eleven billion dollar program. It involves public-private partnerships to accelerate the delivery. And each of the projects add capacity and improve mobility throughout the region and the state. We have several types of projects. We have four major interchange projects, three of which are here in metro Atlanta. You see the number two on the list there is the 285-20 West interchange. We have five major express lane projects. Those are our express lanes, our Peach Pass lanes that you've probably seen on I-75 and 575 and Cobb. And I-75 on the south side of Henry. We have four major interstate widening projects, two on 85 north of the metro area, one on I-16 that's about to start. And I-285 westbound collector distributor lanes on the top end. One commercial vehicle lane project, think truck only lanes. This will be the first of its kind in the nation. This is from south metro around McDonough down to I-475, 75 split is north of Macon. And then we also have four bridge replacement projects. It's a package of four different locations where those will facilitate construction of the express lanes that are listed over to the left. Here's the location of each of those projects. You see the map on the left and you see they're scattered across the region along with the yellow line, which is the truck lane down on the south side. And then you see the inset with the projects down in the Savannah area, which in addition to addressing congestion down there, are also intended to address growth of the Savannah port. Here's our schedule. It's a little difficult to see on the slide, maybe it shows up better on each of your screen. But this is for each of the eighteen projects. And the gray line pretty much shows where we are today. The blue line shows all of the three lefts, so this is prior to us awarding the project. And the yellow line shows the post left, that's the final design and actual construction. And the construction is actual physical constructions noted with the gray dot. And on the west side interchange, we have that lined up. And I'm squinting, looks like for the year 2023 to actually begin. We have a series of projects across the northern half of 285. These are the ones who are called the advanced improvement projects. And each of these are primarily intended to clear a path, to simplify the construction of the express lanes. Closest to us today, you see the dots three and four on the west side, on the left side of your screen. And that's a series of bridges, overpasses, over I-285, which presently it's too narrow through there to add an additional lane on 285. So, this will replace those bridges, make them wider, to simplify the future widening. The actual interchange itself, if you've been around any amount of time, you probably know that we've considered reconstructing the interchange with past efforts over the years. If it were a simple effort, we would've done it by now. There's a planning study back in the '06 and '07 timeframe that identified some potential ideas. You see, the second bullet is our managed lane system plan. We had two rounds of that, one in 2010 and one in 2015. And while the interchange itself does not involve express lanes, we wanted to look at some concepts to ensure that we could accommodate the future express lanes in this area, both on 285 and on I-20. In 2011, we did a feasibility study for the interchange itself. This was a study that was focused on what could we do within the existing right of way, so it had some very limited recommendations. There are also various maintenance projects in this area as well. I think we've been doing some concrete rehab on 285 and some tree clearing along I-20. I say that so that if you see any activity out there today, it is not related to reconstructing the interchange. We have not begun any construction activities for the interchange itself. Typically, you're probably familiar with the way that GDOT and most governments do business with a construction project. We come up with the construction plans, the design plans, and we put those plans out to bid. The contractors propose and the lowest bidder is awarded the contract. These projects, all the major mobility investment programs, including the west side interchange, will be handled a little differently. They are design-build. And what that means is, we are, instead of doing a hundred percent construction plans, we're getting the plans to about the thirty percent phase, which also coincides with the environmental approval. At which point, we will award the project to a firm, which will finalize the construction plans and also start construction as well a short time later. This allows the contractor to propose ideas that will, are intended to reduce costs and also allows us to overlap the final design period with the construction timeframe, so reducing the overall delivery. And why are we here? Marla will walk us through this.
Thank you, Matthew. So good evening. I'm Marla Flowers. I work in for GDOT in the Office of Innovative Delivery and also a resident of South Fulton. So, I am very happy that we have such a massive scale project that's going to take place in my backyard. So, I just want to tell you all a little bit about it. So, why are we here? Because if you're a resident of this area, you're familiar with traveling through the I-285, I-20 West interchange. You know that there are lots of trucks that travel through that interchange and within the corridor every day. What you may not know is that the current design is, doesn't meet our current design standards. So, it was built many decades ago and standards have changed since then. So, the purpose of this project is to upgrade the design of the interchange proper. It's part of it, that's the majority of it, to bring it up to current standards. It's also to improve congestion, because if you get traffic flowing through the area more easily, more efficiently, you reduce the congestion. The congestion is huge and you increase the potential of crashes also. So, that's the purpose for the project that we're working on. The project is, as Matthew said, part of the Major Mobility Investment Program. It's one of the, made the interchange reconstruction that's part of that program. And what this one, this project is doing is rebuilding the I-25 and I-20 West interchange. It's located in Fulton, DeKalb, and Douglas County. It's just the very western end of it is in Douglas County. The project limits are primarily from DL Hollowell on 285 to MLK on 285. And then on I-20 from Hamilton Homes out to about Thornton Road. Matthew mentioned that the concept, we're still working through what the, defining what the actual geometry concepts for the project is. So, we, we've identified a lot of problems that we need to find solutions for. And we're working through concepts to generate, to solve those problems. We don't have those layouts here today because they're not fleshed out, they're still under development. But we wanted to give you an idea of what the project is, so that you know what's coming. And when we do have some layouts to share, that we'll be able to share that here. So, in addition to rebuilding the interchange, it's constructing new lane miles on northbound, southbound on 285 from the limits. I discussed earlier, eastbound and westbound on I-20, as well as a bridge replacement, some new bridges throughout the project limits. New ramps and CDs and, excuse me, and bridges throughout the interchange proper. And it will tie into another project that is part of the Major Mobility Investment Program. And that is to build express lanes out I-20 West, as well as the nor, on 285 north of the, of I-20. So, with that. So, the project is very complicated, as Matthew has already alluded to, that it would've been done a long time ago if it was an easy solution. So, in addition to the geometry, the geometric and the traffic issues and challenges, there also are several environmental challenges. So, every project, I'm sure you know, has to go through approval of an environmental document before you can turn any dirt at all. So, this project happens to lie in the midst of several historic districts. There's a designated, already listed community, the Collier Heights Historic District. There are several others that are potentially historic. There are parks, there's schools, there's the Chattahoochee River, there's environmental justice communities. So, it's full of everything that you could think of. So, the environmental process is a challenge, because not only do you have to work through the technical geometric part of it, but you have to work through the environmental part of it that is just as much of a challenge. So, we've been underway for a little while. Last year, 2018, began our environmental process. And as I mentioned, that process involves developing alternatives, looking at traffic, looking at environmental impacts, developing a concept. So, if you see the timeline, or I guess you can't see the timeline. But we expect to have our environmental studies ongoing through second quarter of 2020, as well as our, our alternatives analysis, our traffic analysis, leading to a concept approval around second quarter of 2020. We also are in the process of identifying any early acquisition right-of-way parcels that will go through 2021. In 2020, we expect to have our first public information open house. And that's where we will have a layout, or layouts, that identify those geometric alternatives that we will have been working on prior to that. So, second quarter of 2020. So, and once we have that, we will start our procurement for our design-build contractor, which is an extensive process where we develop the RFP, we educate the proposers on what we're looking for, and we ultimately get to award it to the best value proposal. During, as that procurement progresses, we will also be completing the environmental document. A public hearing is required once you have a draft document approved. And so, we expect to have that in 2022, to start final design in 2023, once we have a developer onboard, and then construction in, later in 2023. All that to open the new project to traffic in 2026 is our goal. So, we have a lot of milestones that we can order to do that. So, as I mentioned, as Matthew mentioned, it's still very early, but we want to get out in front of people early and let them know what the project is. So, we've been go, making the circuit, as I call it, with all the stakeholders, the major stakeholders that are touched by the project or that the project actually sits in. So, we have, we've met with some major utility, Colonial Pipeline, we've met with the county, Fulton, Douglas, we've met with the city of Atlanta. We're still meeting with them. We've met with the city of Atlanta schools, Georgia Motor Trucking, Cobb County, and South Fulton. We're meeting with you all, city council. We met with the mayor a few weeks ago. And we have Fulton County meeting, I think, tomorrow. So, this is a list of stakeholders that we have already touched. For initial outreach, city of Atlanta, Andrea Boone, District 10, Dustin Hills, District 9, Felicia Moore, city council president and president of Collier Heights, which is the designated historic district. We met with city of Atlanta, planning and community development. Again, we met with Mayor Bill Camp, Bill Edwards. I'm sorry, excuse me. And we are meeting with Fulton County Council soon. There are, also is a group of stakeholders that we're not gonna actually come out and visit, but we're gonna make sure that they are, that they are informed of the project by later. So, that would be some Cobb County officials, Douglas County, Georgia General Assembly, and US congressional representatives, that we will send out information so that they know that the project is coming. And when questions come in, they'll know exactly what we're doing out here. So, you know, we're always looking for, how can we help you know what the project is and how to get, to get the word out to your constituents of what, what is coming? So, how can you partner with the project team? If we have any champions that can help us spread the word of what we're doing, that we're trying to make improvements in South Atlanta and improve freight mobility, all kinds of things. Spread the word and be the champion. Provide, provide commercial development updates to businesses in the area. Provide opportunities for us to share the word of what the project is in any digital media, Facebook, Twitter, whatever, website, community meetings, newsletters. And of course, when we have those public meetings where we actually present the layouts and alternatives of public information on behalf of public hearing, support in those meetings and that helping us with facilities to hold them and then being the champions with us as the meetings are taking place. So, how can the project team help you, help us spread the word? We can make sure that you have current information. You'll see, we can get a copy of the slide presentation, and there are three names listed there. Matthew Fowler, who spoke earlier, myself. Matthew is the program manager for this project on, of MMIP. I am the project manager for GDOT. We have a PMC, which is a project management consultant. And that project manager for us is Angela Alexandra, she's here this evening. You can contact any one of us and we can give you updates or additional information on what's going on in the project. We can engage your constituents and be a resource if you have any questions about what's going on. So, feel free to contact us. So, with that, that's all that I have any questions.
Thank you very much. I assume you're all in. And the Q and A we have is gone.
So, thank you very much for your presentation. The one thing that I took away from this was the environmental resources that are within the corridor. Does this project, are there any preliminary studies saying that any of these environmental resources will be disturbed in the process of this project?
Well, I'm sorry, I, I didn't, I misunderstood, I'm wrong that way. So, with any environmental research, you have to identify the resources, try your best to avoid, minimize, and mitigate impacts. So, that, right now, we're in the process of, for all the different environmental categories, your history, archaeology, ecology, looking at what's out there now. And as we develop these alternatives, looking at what the impacts are due to the alternative and then refining the alternative by minimizing and mitigating, you know, where there are impacts that have been identified.
So, as of right now, there's no, I guess, study showing that any of them will be disturbed?
Not at this time. Right now, we're still gathering data.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ralph.
Just a couple things again. Thank you for the presentation. I wonder if any of this planning, are there any efforts, like you're looking at sound barriers along the interstate? And I wondered, went out in the presentation, I know we talked about Atlanta Public Schools, but Fulton County Schools also travels into that area, because part of South Fulton has come up on the backside of this district. And so, we were wanting to include Fulton County Schools in that planning conversation, as well as adding Representative Derek Jackson to the electronic qualification.
Yes. Noise analysis is part of the environmental process. So, there are studies to evaluate the existing levels of noise, project what the noise levels will be with the alternative that's moving forward, and to determine where noise barriers are feasible and reasonable. I think there's two distinct criteria that have to be met to add a noise barrier to a project. But that will be looked at, that is being looked at.
Ms. Lewis.
Thank you for the presentation. So, I, I have GDOT actually coming to one of my community meetings on the 14th. And it's, it's, Mr. Johnson.
Langston.
Langston Johnson. And so, does he, is he like in a different area he deals with?
Yeah. Langston is the area engineer for District, uh, GDOT is divided into districts and areas. So, District Seven is metro Atlanta, and he's the area three manager.
Okay, so, he is coming to talk about projects that are specific to the region where we live. And so, I guess, this, this information needs to be shared with my constituents as well. So, what did you suggest that I give them? Do you have this in electronic form?
We do, we have this and we can send it to you in a PDF with all the information that we're sharing tonight. And if there is, if Langston has a desire for Matthew or myself to present with him, we can reach out and find out.
Okay, because it is Thursday.
Oh, it's his Thursday.
Yes, and so, this is a lot. And so, I, I guess, if I had to share anything with residents, or can you give him, can you give him a high level of what he can do?
We can, we can give him the fact check.
Yes, yes, we, okay, we have that issue.
Okay. And so, can you make sure he has that before Thursday, because that's the purpose of his presentation, to talk about what area GDOT projects are in? And so, you all deal with major highways?
We are in the Office of Innovative Delivery. So, we are focused primarily on projects delivered in a non-traditional way. So, Matthew talked about design bid build as opposed to design build. Most of the projects in innovative delivery are design build. So, we're looking for efficiencies in the delivery of the project, so that we can complete the program faster.
And so, when you're talking about roundabouts and, and widening of roads within, like Roosevelt Highway, is that a different department?
That, that would be more GDOT's traditional construction work program, and those would be design bid build. So, GDOT would finish the plan, get a contractor to build it.
And so, I would, that's why I would say, can you all kind of work together? Because if we were to take this to residents, they would get totally confused. If you were to come out and speak to residents, they're gonna start asking you questions about the roundabouts that's supposed to be coming in the area, different GDOT projects. So, if you all can kind of work together.
We'll do that, we'll coordinate with Langston. He would handle all those funding projects.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Baker.
Yes, thanks for your presentation. I just wanted to ask a quick question in regards to the GDOT rep for 138 near Oakley Industrial. I was working with an individual, I can't find his name, I was looking for it, but I know that he was recently promoted. And we were moving in a direction to try to do a double turn on 138 and Oakley Industrial. And the ball kind of dropped on it. And I was just wondering, I know that you mentioned who was the rep for District Three. Do you know who is District Seven in CDS South Fulton?
I do not, but I can get you Langston Johnson and Kathy Zehling's contact information. And they can lead you to the right person.
Okay, thank you.
I think Councilman Baker's confused when I said District, when she said District Three, that's, that's, that's our, that's the G.
I'm not confused, I know what she meant.
Well, the person is Langston.
Is that for the whole, our whole area?
Yes.
Okay, any further comments? If not, thank you all for your presentation.
Thank you.
Man, first.
Next item on the agenda is council discussion on tenant brokerage and commercial real estate advisory service by T. Dallas Smith and Company.
Good evening and hello. I'm T. Dallas Smith with T. Dallas Smith and Company. I just want to say thank you to Mayor and Council for allowing us to present to you today. We're gonna try to go through this so we won't hold you all night. And I think, is my clicker clicking? There we go. All right, I'm moving, now I'm moving too fast. Is that, is that me or is that somebody else? Okay. So, I didn't touch it. But while they're doing it out, what I'll just say, I'm here, I'm here joined with two of my business partners, Leontei Benton and Dexter Warrior. We have another one that's en route, but unfortunately, I think he actually went to Fulton Industrial. So, well, he'll, when he gets here, he'll get here. But I want to just talk a little bit about T. Dallas Smith and Company. We are a commercial real estate company, focused on tenant representation and brokerage services. I've been doing this more than half my life. I started when I was nineteen, I'm fifty-seven now. Sometimes when I write that number down, it looks a lot older than I really feel like I am. But anyway, it is what it is. But I've seen a lot of things. And one of the things, I had the pleasure of speaking at one of my hot towers functions for South Fulton a few years ago. And I made the comment that Atlanta was a brokerage-centered town and that any city that then focused on the brokerage community is missing ninety-five percent of the transactions that happen in, in development. And so, that being the case, we really start kind of focusing on some of the things, helping the city in different things. We do work right now for the city of Stonecrest. We help them with their headquarters, their city hall, and now with some of their other auxiliary facilities. We help them with their headquarters, their city hall, and now with some of their other auxiliary facilities. So a little bit about us. We are, we were established March seventh, two thousand and seven with the largest African-American tenant rep firm in the country. We've got cumulative more than a hundred and fifty years of experience together. Just with me and Dexter Long, we've got about a hundred years, son. We've been around a long time. These are, this is just a partial list of some of the clients that we currently represent for FedEx, Coca-Cola, AT&amp;T, Integral, GSA. And we do some one-offs, H.J. Russell and Company. We've done some South Royal Aquarium. Again, this is a partial client list. We have offices in four different cities. We base in Atlanta. We have an office in New Jersey, Dallas and Los Angeles. And we cover all the areas that are currently in the dark blue areas. I talked about myself, I've been in the business a very long time. I was the first African-American broker with Cusman Wakefield in nineteen eighty-nine. But I started with a guy named Tommy Tiff in East Point area. If you're familiar with Tiff County, Tiff, City of Tiff, then that family brought me to the real estate business. Dexter Warrior, my business partner, like I said, he's been doing it for a hundred years. So collectively, we've been around a long time. Robert Scott, he's the one who lost the traffic.
Oh, each other.
All right, there he is, Robert. Robert actually been in the business as long as we have. I mean, we've been around a long time. He's actually our point for everything municipal. He's the one who deals with David for the city of Stonecrest. And then there's the young Buck, who's only been in the business for fourteen years. But he's the reason I actually started the firm. And some of you, he's really the future. I've been training my replacement from day one. He's my replacement. These are some other team members that, as you can see, this is a commercial real estate firm that looks a little different than most real estate firms in this business. Considering that we only make up one point three percent of the industry in Blackstone Commercial Real Estate. Our services, so we can help with office-related real estate services. That's everything from, we did the headquarters for Georgia's own credit union building, which is downtown at the one hundred B Street. That was just an example of one of the office. We're working on some headquarters things right now as we speak. Industrial, we do a ton of industrial work for FedEx across the United States as well as for AT&amp;T. Land services, similar, they're, if anybody's ever eaten at Pascal's North Side Drive, I did that assembly for Herman Russell when he was alive. Took eight years to do that assembly for that, I worked for Herman after I left Cusman Wakefield. Advisory Services, I'm going to kind of speed up and I'll back up and talk a little bit about the advisory service. So if you look at this photo, this was one of the conversations that I actually had. I talked about broker-focused functions. And if you look at this pitch, it's a little different than some of the people in this room. But if you don't focus on the brokerage community, you won't see the majority of the deals that happen in this marketplace. We can help you do that. I serve as a director in Atlanta Commercial Board of Realtors. And well, as I sit along with a whole lot of other major firms. And one of the things that we've got to do is find something that's focused, that the city, that the council and mayor can get behind us. And this is our, the criteria that we want to deal, this is what we want to focus on. Figure out what that is, and we'll put together sort of a broker-focused function for you as just part of the service that we'll do. And I might add, this service won't cost you anything. You say, well, we don't work for free. But what we do is we create commissionable events. It won't be until you acquire something or a transaction, transaction takes place, but we'll get paid by the other side. And so this is just mark, this is common for the marketplace. So again, this is a service that we basically will offer for the city, focus on the things that you want to be focused on. And I've got on here broker-focused functions. And you'll see this next slide, and you'll say, what the heck is that? So a broker-focused functions, oftentimes a developer will have a function to invite brokers and they'll give away a gift card or a green egg for, or something. But you've got a hundred fifty, a hundred people in a room who are focused on doing development work or representing tenants. So it can be, you name a company like State Farm took two million square feet out in North Fulton. That was a broker-led deal. If you're talking about any other developments downtown, midtown, but it was typically a broker-led function. Like I said, ninety-five percent of the deals that happen in this town are led by brokers. And what we want to be able to do is to help you with number one, acquiring properties for your home, city hall, town center. Number two, help you focus on an area that you really want to activate. And then we'll help you put the plan together around that basis. I know we do nineteen slides very quickly, but again, I want to be very conscious of your time. But I'm here, I can answer any questions and my team can help as well. Thank you, T. Dallas.
Oh, absolutely. Ms. Kegler?
Thank you so much for your presentation.
My pleasure.
Glad to have some questions. I looked to the letter in the back of the, the last item in our agenda.
Okay.
And it is a letter addressed to you. And it's about actually about us providing services. It sounds really good. This is our first time hearing it. And so I want to ask the city manager, where is it in our plan of acquiring commercial property? City acquiring commercial property, where is it in our plan?
So your strategic plan is overseeing all of your activities. The operationalizing of acquiring properties, we don't have that expertise internally. Similar to City of Stonecrest and many others who leverage a firm like this to coordinate those activities for them. So you have an overarching goal of increasing the capacity of the city, increasing your facilities, locating your city hall, developing a downtown, et cetera, et cetera. As you make those big picture decisions, you have to have people who implement, acquire, lease, et cetera, et cetera. That's what this firm would be doing on behalf of the city. So you wouldn't see that spelled out in your strategic plan. You would simply operationalize it through their efforts.
And what we did write down is that the commissions are paid from the other side. Because the next question, or the question that was in my mind while you were making the presentation was, budget, where is it getting funded? How are we going to pay for it? But you very eloquently addressed that. Thank you. So it looks good and it sounds good. I just hope that when you do decide that we're going to put city hall wherever it's going to be, or town center, or whatever, that you will help us with the strategic part of why it should be wherever it's going to be. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kegler. Councilor Brown?
Thank you for your presentation. One of the things I heard you talk about is that in this business, about ninety-five percent is brokerage revenue. So it seems to me that this also benefits those seven economic nodes that we talked about in terms of driving development there, whether we're in it or not. Because we understand that's where we want to do our economic development. So that seems like a win. And again, I'm with Councilwoman Gilger. It's great that we're not living the deal on this portion. But I really appreciate, appreciate your expertise that you bring to the table based on the presentation.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Royce?
Thank you. I appreciate your expertise. What is your interaction with the Atlanta Home Builders Association? I attended a meeting there last week in Marlow full of, it was full of Realtors, developers. And so what is your interaction with that organization? And I heard a great presentation from somebody by the name of Eugene John James. So, and I'm actually going to invite him here to give that same presentation to this because he talked about trends in the, in the real estate business and the housing market. So can you, what's your interaction with him?
I know him well. He is the statistics guy. He's also a member of the Empire Board of Realtors. So the Empire Board of Realtors is historically an eighty-year-old organization, of which we have the president here, who is Leontae Benton, who's the president of Empire Board of Realtors, who happens to be one of the partners. So we're tied into the community as it relates to the residents as well by his leadership and also folks that we know in the marketplace who are builders in the marketplace.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Any further questions?
Yes. Hi, thanks for your presentation. So I see in our packet, there is a contract for you all to be exclusive commercial broker for our city. Are we voting on that contract tonight?
I think so.
Or is that just for future reference?
It could be taken from the consent brought to the regular agenda.
So it's on the consent agenda?
No, it's not.
It's not on?
No, it's currently not on the consent.
I'm sorry. Not from the brokerage. So it's not on any agenda for today?
No, now it's not, but I was going to ask that we do it.
Okay. So who has been, and this is really for our city manager, who has been our commercial broker up until this point?
So we haven't really had one. We've worked with a variety of different people. I think, and I don't necessarily want to call out their names, but a variety of different firms on one-off projects. But I'll tell you probably why we haven't been very successful today. We don't have any representation.
One of the things I would like to see is a monthly report of all of the deals that you are working on. Sometimes there are deals that are happening that I, as a councilperson, just do not aware of. So I love the transparency of naming a broker so that anyone that has questions about any of those deals, we would expect you all to have the answers. And is that, is that something that you would be able to provide a monthly report of, any deals that are going on and the progress of those deals?
I think together, we can draft what the core responsibilities are or what reports that you'd like from us to get. And come together with a sense of, that Dexter wants to say something.
I guess I just need to understand your question. When you say deals that are going on, you're talking about deals that are going on with respect to the city itself? Or just kind of help us understand the backdrop of your question?
So if someone comes to the city and wants to do a development deal with the city, they may come to the city manager, they may come to the mayor, they may come to a councilperson. But I'm assuming that if you are the commercial broker for the city, that they would all come to you?
Are you speaking to, again, I'm just trying to understand the question. You're speaking to someone who's looking at buying an independently owned piece of property that's in the city itself? Who's proposing to put a development on that site? The site is not necessarily controlled by the city, but is controlled by a private individual and they're proposing to?
No, no, I mean the sites that are controlled by the, the sites that are controlled by the city.
Okay, perfect. I just want to understand your question because I didn't quite understand the magnitude of what you meant in terms of how broad the question, we should address it.
And I think that's one of those instances where we can work in tandem with the economic development directive you currently have. So that we're not stepping on each other's toes, but we're really clear, make sure that you get the deliverable that you want. But our whole focus is really more about, number one, taking care of the things that the city needs and also activating development in the city. So we'll be focused on that. Again, everybody's, we'll have to, this is probably going to have to take place in an executive session, I would imagine. And that we would also have, what we'd like to do, because everybody represents different areas of South Fulton, City of South Fulton. But what we'd like to be able to come away with, say, there's three top things that we'd like to do from a real estate perspective that you, everybody would agree to. You're going to do one, two, and three. And then we would focus on how we would do that and be very clear on how that would happen.
And so I think you brought up a great point about activating development. So we do have the development authority. How, how would you work with that development authority or maybe how it'd be done in another use of the word?
The number one thing, the economic development person has to be known by all the brokers in town. So as part of what we're talking about activating broker functions, we've got to make sure that our economic development person gets the, gets the honor and everybody gets to meet that person. But also different brokers focus on different things. There's brokers who focus on retails, brokers who focus on industrial, brokers who focus on office. So we, we need to, we can get as granular as we need to be based on what it is that you like to see. So if you come away with the top three things, they're all going to be office, they're all going to be retail, we're going to focus you dead end on the retail brokers. So Ray Hudson Hope, who's one of the folks I used to serve on Georgia State Board with, who's one of the best retail brokers in town, needs to be in, you know, be in that mix. Who will meet with them, understand what the use is, and we'll bring it all in, the retail developers and brokers, to make sure that they're working in tandem with the economic development broker. And I think one of the number one things that brokers want to be able to see and walk away with is knowing that they're dealing with a city that's pro-business and they want to do business. And so we want to make sure all that is, that happens. And number one, it's all about relationships. I mean, it's, we've got to be very intentional about the relationships that we want to build. If it's going to be retail, if it's going to be office, if it's going to be industrial, we're going to focus you on that.
Thank you for that.
Oh, absolutely.
I would say that I do appreciate the presentation. I think that it may be a little premature for us to sign on with you now because we are actually, we haven't made all of those decisions. We have not come to a consensus as a council about how we want to develop the city, what directions we are taking, different character areas in the city. We have a economic development strategic plan that I am interested in awaiting the report back for. So we haven't even gotten that report back yet and to digest that, to see if we agree with it, if we're going to move forward. Perhaps it would be great to have it at the table as we are reviewing it. But I, I would maybe hesitate moving to, moving faster than the economic development strategic plan, which we're, which we're already in.
I'll just make this point. You don't want to wait to go to court to hire a lawyer. You want to go into court on the other side with a lawyer. Because trust me, the folks on the other side will have representation. So you, whether you're buying something, some, the other side will have representation.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even, I don't, so to follow through that analogy, I don't think that we're ready to go to court yet. We haven't even decided what, what cases we want to litigate. So we, we really have, we have some more conversation to have. And I do think maybe you could facilitate that, that conversation. But I just, yeah, that's, that's my only hesitation. Casey, yeah?
You may want to make that point.
Good evening. You know, we, we just want to put emphasis on the fact that as the city grow and develop, you have requirements such as your public works, your, your city hall. Those are existing leases that you have that has to be managed or renewed or, you know, whatever. So we can assist in that process of getting your facility needs now versus your master planning under economic development.
Yes, sir. There was something in that question that you did not talk a little bit about, that I picked up. And in your business, to come and bench your family at the other time is very, very important. And I think we need to talk about that.
Absolutely. So we're, we're in the middle of three major transactions right now, which no one here has heard of. And you won't hear about it until there's a ribbon cut. And so it's very important that, you know, loose lips sink ships. And so the plans that the city wants to execute and move on, that's how we, that's how we've moved it. Thirty-seven years of doing this business, thirty-eight, a hundred. We've all learned that we have to be very, we've got to be intentional about what it is that you're trying to do. So to, to your point, we'd love to be a part of that, helping you make the sausage early on in the process. Because that's going to determine, I'm going to, based on where you end up, I'm going to give you this recommendation, that recommendation, this recommendation. But we'd be more than glad to help you do this. And I'll just say this, quite frankly, I've been in this business thirty-seven years. My mother loves me dearly, but my mother still doesn't really know what I do for a living. And the reality of it is, what we do is so, it's just so rare in our community that the average person who of color really doesn't understand the process of how development really happens. But Midtown, Buckhead, Downtown, they have brokers and they have functions on a regular basis. basis. So if you go and look at the developments that's happening in these other places, and I'll tell you they're high, they're highly broker-centric, that's why these developments are happening. Developments are not happening in our community because we don't, we're not broker-centric. And I, I can't really say it any more plain than that. But the reality of it is, if you want to get ahead of this, and I lived in South Fulton, I've lived for fourteen years, Dexter lives here, he lives here. Um, we want to see this happen in our own community. So that's one of the reasons why we're focused on helping cities that look like us. Because quite frankly, we can, we can expose you to a group of people if you, and we're all from Atlanta, by the way, too. So it's kind of rare that you get four folks. I mean, we're all from the city of Atlanta. And we're all clear on the red line that took place in the middle of I-20. And you look like, well, why it hadn't happened? This is a real deal. So we've got to get very intentional and very focused on what it is that we want. And we come away with the ask and then we put a plan together to execute that very thing.
I just want to make that clear because, uh, I've been running it a long time and I'm an economic development people. And sometimes people don't understand, you know, why they don't get certain information. And, uh, I think you said it best, is loose lips sink ships. And, uh, that's just a, a part of economic development that we just want to have in our, uh, business.
So I will say, three of us do understand that, uh, Councilmember Gump just finished AARC leadership Economic Development Class. Councilmember Ral, myself, we're currently going through Georgia Economic Development Academy. And as a matter of fact, we graduated this week. And so, um, we, uh, do understand confidentiality. And, and, and if we want to know what is going on in our city as far as development wise, then I think your, uh, business is one way to do it. Uh, the reason we don't know about development deals in our city is because we don't control the projects. So people who come in, they don't have, it's like you're in a city with several banks. They don't have to come to the city of South Fulton for the deal. They can go to Fulton County Development Authority and that's their right to do so. So if they go through the Fulton County Development Authority, of course, you're not going to, you're going to have a confidentiality there. And so I do think, uh, what you all are doing, your service is very important because that's one way that we can be aware of what's going on. I look at it different. I do, do not think, I know that we cannot publicize every deal that we do. Um, I, I know that as you go through this process, you and our economic development director may not decide confidentiality agreements as you go through certain deals. And so, um, this is exactly what we, this is exactly what we need, your service, in order for us to know what development is happening and to control the development that is happening in our, um, in our city. So I welcome your service. Um, and I think this is what we really need.
Thank you.
So thank you very much for your presentation. Um, I really wanted my colleagues to have an opportunity to hear from you. Um, I did a lot of research, um, on you all, even though I was very familiar. But your track record is impeccable. Um, I definitely think that this is something that we need, um, instead of waiting. Uh, and it doesn't cost us anything when it's running. So I just encourage you all to meet with, you know, my colleagues if you haven't already, um, just to kind of, you know, talk with them, learn a little bit more about each one of their districts. But I definitely think that this is a good thing. Um, I think this will give us the opportunity to really understand, um, what the citizens have been asking for. And, um, I just ask that, I will ask for it to go on the consent agenda. Um, and I just ask that you all will support the, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we will hear from Ms. Gilian. We will close the conversation after that.
I just want to say that I would like to meet with each one.
Yes, sir.
Call together. I have a lot of questions.
We'd love to do it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
All right. Thank you, Council. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That is the council agenda for today.
I'd like to make a motion for us to go into the executive session for legal real estate and personal, in-person now.
Probably move to second in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Uh.